Good morning. Barely, 11:30, it's still morning and thanks again so much for your patience. I see Eileen Weiser walking in also, so we have a quorum. And we're going to at least do some of the logistics of the meeting to get started and then we won't get to any substantive item until the entire board's here, which should be soon. But good morning, the time is now 11:30 and a quorum of the board is present. The State Board of Ed meeting of March 8, 2011 is called to order. And since some of you wandered in the last few minutes, I just mentioned, this isn't because the board is late, this is because the board's been working with some legislators this morning and got held up a bit, but we appreciate your patience. We're going to get to important business today. So the first item is the approval of agenda and order of priority.
A move of approval?
A support.
Moved by John, supported by Nancy. And I think we wanted to add an item on discussion of the Governor Snyder's budget. That's been added or intended to be added?
Yes, it is, it's on there.
I think the reason to mention that is just I'm not sure it was on the very first notice that went out, so.
It's DI, I'm not sure why it's DI, but hmm, we'll take it.
Okay.
Now, I've got H on mine.
And then under discussions?
Both places.
Discussion is H, approval is I.
Discussion and then action later.
Ah, okay, got it.
So with that in mind, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same? Thank you. Mertz, any introductions, please?
Yes. Good morning, welcome to the State Board of Education meeting. I'll go around the table, beginning on my left, and I'll start with the Chairman of the Board, Michael Flanagan, who is Superintendent of Public Instruction. And to his left is John Austin, the President of the Board. To John's left, it will be Cassandra Albridge, she's on her way, she's the Vice President of the Board. Nancy Danhoff, right there at the table, and she's the Secretary of the Board. On Nancy's left is Kathleen Strauss, she is also on her way. The next chair is Matenga Ragatz, she's the Teacher of the Year. She is unable to join us today, she's preparing her students for exams. As we go across the table, Eileen Weiser is here, she's from Ann Arbor. Dan Varner, from Detroit. Richard Zilee, from Detroit. And Mary Ann McGuire, Richard Zilee is the NASB delegate, National Association State Boards of Education, the Board's delegate to that organization. And then this is Mary Ann McGuire, the Treasurer of the Board, also from Detroit. And we are, in the interest of time, going to skip the staff and organization introductions. Thank you for coming, but we do have some visitors here that I think Mike wants to introduce.
We do, and I think it's appropriate, right up front, we have visitors from Uzbekistan, and we were hoping that their delegation leader could have folks stand so we can welcome them. We'd appreciate welcoming them to our State Board meeting, and thank you for being here today. And Sally, we know that they've spent some time in the department this morning. Eleanor, would you like to briefly speak to that?
We had the pleasure of hosting the group from Uzbekistan this morning, because they're here, they're interested in inclusive education. And because Michigan does such a great job with inclusive programs, they're here to learn from us. And the personnel that you have here represent teachers, preschool teachers, university personnel, there's a pediatrician hiding among you, and teachers of teachers and continuing education teachers. And so we have a, everyone that is here is interested in inclusive educational programs. And so we spent just a brief time this morning explaining how students are programmed into inclusive settings in Michigan, how we encourage it, and how we finance it. And imagine if we tried to do that within about an hour and 15 minutes.
Thank you, Eleanor. And I would also say that it's disappointing, because I know Liz Bauer was hoping to join the group today, our colleague, and isn't able to make it, apparently not a leg issue or.
Hmm, probably.
So, but appreciate her efforts in joining us. And many of you know, of course, that this, I think you've been an independent republic since 1991, former part of the Soviet Union, and it's in Central Asia, so it's really exciting to have you here today with us. And feel free to join us for the entire meeting today, or visit other parts of the department as you see fit. So, thank you.
... spent some time in Oakland County. I know one of the places that they're visiting is Oakland County, and they're going to the Ark later today, so.
The Ark, okay. Cultural.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. And then, I mean, maybe just privilege us for a second, I know we're starting a new order to try to be more succinct on intros, but I do think it's probably worth calling to attention that someone who I think has been very fair with the State Board meetings and in his reporting, Jerry Crandall, this is his last day doing so.
Oh, really?
And he's actually semi-retiring from this semi-retirement job that he's had, I think. So, we wish him well. Many of you don't know that Jerry was a lottery commissioner at one time, he was Governor Angler's Chief of Staff at one time, he was Head of Communications for the House and Senate. And I really do appreciate and respect the way that he's reported these meetings in such a fair and appropriate way. So, let's give a hand to Jerry. Now, we're moving to discussion items on Committee of the Hall. And the first item today, is that appropriate to get going right now? The first item is Michigan School Accreditation Accountability System, known as MYSS, we're going back to that pronunciation, it gets a little Scandinavian to keep doing the SASS thing.
Either they take the wrong idea of what we're doing, so I.
Well, there you go. There you go. Thank you for leading that one, instead of me, Virginia. And I, first of all, I really want to thank the Board, even though it's delayed us a little bit today, I really think it's admirable that a statewide elected Board, in the Constitution, with constitutional authority, took time to meet with legislators today and try to help them understand issues related in general to the Department of Ed, but also to MYSS. And just a couple of things briefly about that, and I'm going to turn it over to President Austin. It's just, we've heard some things recently that MYSS is going to be more work for us, and we're really, you know, lamenting the size of the department. It's actually no more work for the department to do MYSS or EdYes, it's an effective repackaging. And we do have a temporary injunction, we absolutely will address the judge's concerns. There are going to be some technical issues and others that need to be clarified, and we will do that. We're going to continue to bring clarity and light to the current state of our schools and the impact on students. I think some of us are feeling the heat a little bit on that, because, you know, it just is what it is, that I'm not sure everyone is ready to move in that direction just yet. And at any rate, I can't thank the Board enough for spending time today, and I'd like to turn it over to John Austin, please.
And I guess others of you now have visited with some of the legislators, and I really think it is an educational process which will help us encourage them and I think see them support the implementation of MYSS. And the discussion, I've had five or six discussions with legislators, and I think it's very helpful to give them the history of accreditation systems, including, you know, our effort in EdYes to include the legislative required non-performance measures. Do you have a school improvement plan? Are you teaching the curriculum? Are you administering the state test? Do you have, basically, the books in your library to be a school? EdYes was an effort to include, along with those measures, some efforts at performance. Are students learning? Are they graduating? It didn't succeed in really exposing and helping us see the truly unaccredited schools that we need to help turn around, that we need to focus attention on, because it ended up with the self-reporting, not having hardly any schools be in the category where we need to focus our effort of unaccredited. So, as I've explained and that I've talked to legislators about what we've done in the latest set of recommendations with two years of good input from all the education stakeholders, was to try to align and focus our accreditation system so that includes the state legislative required features of accreditation, along with some performance measures, academic achievement and growth and graduation, as we want to, to expose the majority of schools, supermajority, most all schools will be fully accredited and are decently performing, but to really help us focus on those that are truly in need of reform. I think I've been, it's been interesting to learn about what they're hearing and what the issues are. I've certainly tried to say, this, there's nothing illegal about this system, it does include the non-performance measures and its performance measures, it does conform, we're not implementing it unilaterally, we're asking for your support, House and Senate committees, to move ahead, and we're not unilaterally advancing this system. If we don't implement it, education, yes, will stay in place, which is a good effort, but is not yet the kind of coherent and aligned system that I think we would have all benefit from. Now, that said, particularly, a lot of legislators are new, they have a lot of questions and concerns, including, you know, why do we need an accreditation system at all? Doesn't North Central do accreditation of schools? And part of the discussion is, what does a state expectation around accreditation that values performance? You know, every state is looking at the performance of its schools, and those accreditation systems of the traditional ones don't look at that at all. So, I think it's important for us to try to share that kind of information and to also work through, as I think, as Mike said, the injunction. I think we can and will succeed with the help of our Attorney General's Office in pointing out that this is conforming with the law. And I don't think anyone disagrees, including Middle Cities and others, that the content of what we are including in the accreditation system is the kind of stuff we need to do. It's the factors of a school and some focus on the performance of the school and the students. So, I hope we can, through this process, encourage adoption of it, and I feel confident that we will.
Other board comments or thoughts? Nancy, please.
I think as I've spoken with legislators, as I'm sure all of you have experienced too, again, I can't emphasize enough what a recently elected body we have there, and how their knowledge of what accreditation is and how it affects education is really key, I believe, to this, to this next process. And I was surprised when I, when I spoke with a couple of them last week, that they did not even know about education, yes. They said, "Well, how are you being accrediting schools now and what's in place now?" And when we got to talking about that, it seemed a lot more logical then to progress as, as the world changed, as, as the demands on student performance and on educators' performance changed. It seemed logical, more logical to them than that this was a progression, not just something new that we'd never had before. So I think as we move forward, that's something we need to really keep in mind, is the prior knowledge of these legislators, just because they haven't been there, is something we need to start out with before we get into the actual legislation we're ask, or not, not legislation policy, sorry, we're asking them to support. Excuse me.
Just meant to be a placeholder, and I know John wanted to make some comments, which he did, or are we, any other? Sir? Okay. Well, we'll proceed with, as I said, addressing the judge's concerns, and we'll continue to report back, of course. Item B is teacher administrator quality recommendations and next steps. And I've asked Sally to kick this off a little bit, our Deputy Superintendent, Chief Academic Officer, and highlight a few of the areas that we've made progress on. One is alternative certification, one is the so-called three-tier system, and the other is professional development policy and guidance. And then I would welcome John as President and others to weigh in. This was decided at the Agenda Planning Committee to try to see what our status is and where we're heading. So, Sally, please.
And this is based, obviously, on the recommendations you made to Governor Snyder and the legislature. And in the agenda planning, we thought it might be helpful if I gave you some context for the progress we've made on some of them, not all, but just highlight those that we have, have moved forward on. So, let me just start with the first one, which is the professional development. And just some background, so you know, what do we currently require for professional development by state law? That means that every teacher has to have five days of professional development every year. If you are a new teacher, in your first three, four years, you have to have an additional 15 days spread over those three years. So, a brand-new teacher should actually be getting 20 days of professional development. And that professional development is used to determine recertification or renewal of the teacher's license. So they have to have, they have to have those 15 days, but they also have to have six college credits and/or 18 state board CEUs or a combination of those. So there actually is quite a bit of requirements for professional development that are in law as we speak. We also have the alternative certification for administrators and teachers, and I'll get that, into that in a minute, but that also carries some requirements for professional development. So, along the way in a teacher's career, there are requirements for upgrading their professional skills. It's a little bit different for administrators, and I'll talk about the three-tier licensure system that's underway for teachers, but we actually already have a three-tier licensure system for administrators. And I'll go into that a little bit more detail, but right now, administrators, as you know, it just changed over from voluntary certification to a requirement certification for administrators. But even when it was a voluntary system, we also had two endorsements. So, an administrator could have a basic certification, and if they chose, they could get two endorsements added on to that. So the first endorsement, or the first tier, would be a specialty endorsement, and then if they wanted to go beyond that, they could have an enhanced endorsement. So, we already had in place, even though it was voluntary at the very, for the basic certificate, at least a three-tier process so that they could demonstrate that they had deepened their expertise and their skills and their knowledge, and their performance along that way. Last October, we started a referent group to talk about professional development, and we did that partially because there had been so much conversation to, from the Race to the Top applications about the importance of professional development, and some of the concerns about, you know, what is the real purpose of evaluation? The real purpose of evaluation is to give someone an opportunity to figure out where they most need to improve their skills. So we thought it was important to bring a referent group together to really look at the State Board's current policy on professional development, and in the light of everything that had been gone with the reform and et cetera, that we would take a look at the policy and see what might need to be updated. That group, interestingly enough, we're all going to have to learn new terminology, the new terminology is really moving away from professional development to professional learning. So that's, even at the national level. So, I'm an old-timer using PD, so I'm going to have to change that, but. So they are really gearing up to look at the professional learning. They have spent the last couple of months looking at the existing State Board policy and materials as it relates to professional development. They will be making some recommendations to you, we're hoping to have those done in the spring, so that they will be able to present those to you. They will also develop some guidelines, because one of the things we are concerned about is you can have a policy, and it can sit on a shelf, and if you don't have any guidelines that specifically say, here's how you can make that into a reality. So, we really do want to have guidelines so that districts can translate that policy into good practice. And also a communication plan. I had talked with the group when we first started and said, I've been around a long time, talking about professional development, professional learning, and we know what is good professional learning and development, but sometimes we just don't do it. So we're at the stage right now where we just need to do it. We know the one-time shop, the one-time shop workshops don't work, we know embedded professional development works, we know professional learning communities work, so how do we work as an educational entity to make sure those things are embedded? And how do you do those five professional days? It doesn't mean you have to bring in an expert. How do you build in time that we will use, we will change our State Board CEU system to allow you to do professional learning communities within your school time and get credit for that? So, that's been some of the very, very rich discussion that the referent group has been having. And they've made a commitment that they would like to work with us to communicate that throughout the state, and that we would be looking for voluntary commitments, that when we look for professional development, we're hoping that it's going to comply with some, some very good indicators of what's good quality professional development. And then at the department, we will be looking at the grants that we give out, we will be looking for people to look at the policy, look at the guidelines, and then when they write a grant application, to really show us how they made sure that it is embedded and sustained professional development, that really will focus on specific teachers' needs with their specific students. So, I think we've made, we're making some good progress, and you'll hear more about that as we come to, as we, as we finish that up. That's a real quick update on one of the components in your plan to the Governor. The other one I wanted to spend a few minutes talking about is the three-tier licensure system for teachers. And I mentioned that we have almost by default a three-tier license for administrators. In the teacher licensure group, Flora Jenkins has done a great job with bringing yet another referent group together that will be developing recommendations. These recommendations will go into administrative rules. But the real purpose, and this came out of your teacher prep study group, the real purpose of having a third tier for teachers was to give them an opportunity to advance in their profession without having to leave the teaching profession and go into administration. And that really is, has been primarily the only way for a teacher really to advance. And so, the three-tier option, as, as is being developed by the, the referent group, will have a third tier that will be optional, very similar to what the tiers for the administrators is. And the, one of the ways to get there will be through the National Board certification process or an equivalent. So, the group did want a little bit of opportunity that there's not just one way, there could be other ways, that would have to be equally rigorous as a National Board. And for those of you who've talked with any teacher who's gone through the National Board, it is very intense, very rigorous, and the stories I've heard is they've learned more about their teaching than they ever thought they could, because it really helps them to be reflective about their teaching. So, it will be the National Board or something that equivalent to that. But as I said, the real purpose is to recognize teacher leaders, they might be the Chair of the School Improvement Committee, they might be a mentor, they might be the person that's heading up the professional learning communities in the district. So, the idea is that they would go through a process, but they would also be demonstrating that they are providing leadership in the district without having to move into that administrative function.
And Sally, one of the things, as we've talked about this at SUKS Group and Leadership Team, is, if you look at the history of this, folks who want to move on in the system often feel now their only alternative is to become an assistant principal and pick up milk cartons for a couple of years and earn your keeps. We're saying you should be able to stay in the teaching profession and have a career ladder, and that's what this is kind of heading towards, as you can see.
And the other thing that the group has been talking about, and this ties in with what you had mentioned, and your, and your interest in the three-tier system, was to make sure that we've got the mentoring and the induction. Mentoring and induction is in the law, but we've got, I would say, a continuum of not really pulling it off at all to doing some really, really good things. And by having that third tier, it really does provide those teachers that are very good master teachers an opportunity to work with new teachers in particular as they try to hone their skills. But I knew that that was an interest of yours, and it also builds in on the individual development professional plan, so that new teachers would have a plan that said, these are the specific skills that I need to work on. And trying to kind of disentangle, I don't know if that's the best word, but to disentangle that there's a relationship between the salary structure and the number of hours. One of the, I heard the group talk about this for quite a while, that one of the challenges for a new teacher is because the salary schedule is based on getting a master's degree, they immediately move into getting a master's degree, which may not be what they need for that first year or two, where they really may need a mentor to talk to them about some very, very different things. So, some very, you know, good discussions, lively discussions. The third one I wanted to mention to you, which is also on your list, is you've got the Implement Administrator Certification and Training, and I'm going to do a little segue with both teachers and administrators, but let me start with the administrators. As I mentioned, we do have, we moved with the last legislation in the school reform legislation from a voluntary to a required certification for administrators. Now, those that are already in the administrative positions were grand-personed in under the law. There are the three tiers, you've got the basic, the specialty endorsement, and the enhanced endorsement. To get a basic, you need a master's degree in an ed leadership or ed administrative program, or you can have a grad degree program in an other area, but you do have to have 18 hours in the administrative leadership, ed leadership or ed administrative courses. The university programs for the basic, they have to be approved by your State Board of Education requirements for standards for administrators. And those standards, if you recall, you approved those a couple of years ago, those are based on national standards, but they do have a couple of Michigan-specific standards that include universal design, as well as the focus on technology. Those ringing a bell, for those of you? And then we've got the endorsements, and that's where you get to the second and third tier. Those endorsements are offered by the state education associations. And they, the language in the legislation is that they have to be performance-based. The two that I think are the most prevalent are the, would be MyLife, which you should know, if you remember, that we had a partnership with Microsoft, and I think they had probably presented a couple of times. It was very computer-based, a long-term sustained professional development experience for administrators, and I participated in it when I was still Superintendent, and it was a very, very good professional development experience. And you did have to demonstrate that you had learned and how it related to your, to your role. The other one that we've also approved is Courageous Journey, which comes out of the Michigan Association of School Administrators, and I'll probably get in trouble, because I'll probably forget a couple of others. But this also is a year-long program that the superintendents participate in, and it, I've been very, very impressed. I sat in on a presentation from one superintendent when he was making his, almost the equivalent of a dissertation at the end of it, that he was making his presentation. And he had a couple of people around, he had a notebook that fat, and he literally walked through some things that he had done that impacted what he was doing in his district, and he could document the changes. So, it was very, Mike, you know, you've gone to at least one of those as well. They're very, very impressive.
Suzer Volak, who I had the opportunity to bring years ago onto a staff I work with, is now the Superintendent in Farmington, and I'm telling you, they, it's just a magnificent way to make real what superintendent work is now. It isn't what it was even 20 years ago, it isn't what it was five years ago. I mean, it's so student achievement oriented, it's so thoughtful about how structures and systems are going to support this, but, by the way, I do want to, I was going to save this for later, but I might as well throw it in right now, you know, that, to use Sally's expression, we found out we're going to be grandpersons again, so we're very happy with that. Let's put that in.
And Eileen Hamilton isn't here to say, she already is.
Yeah, that's right, Eileen is this recently again.
Did everybody pick up on that? You're not going to tell them how you didn't?
Well, okay, now, I mean, just briefly, my son calls and says, "Look at your email, your personal email." So I pull out the Mac and I pull it up, and there's Ella, and, you know, I see her holding something, so Anna, right away, got what I'm ready to say, and she's kind of crying and all that, and when I'm looking like, well, what, I don't, what's she holding that? It says "Big Sister" on her. So then I said, "Oh, you're having a little sister." No, 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 that's a whole separate.
Some of us have all fallen the uptick.
That's why all the rest of these guys are here.
Okay, so we've got, so we do have a, we have a couple of good programs that are, that are in, that are already in operation for the specialty endorsement, and I think a number of them are really looking to develop programs now that would be put into place for the enhanced endorsement, which would be the third. But the state associations can also, now I'm going to put, that's, that's the traditional route for administrative certification. As you will recall, the school reform legislation also included alternative routes for both teachers and for administrators. And we are just about looking at the final drafts of both of those. For the route for the administrators, we've also had a referent group taking a look at both of those, so they're pretty much done with their final work. And the goal, again, was to make it much more performance-based. It can be coursework, it can be seminars, it can be projects, so it's not like the traditional college program that you would go through, although if it's what you choose to go through, then you go through the traditional route. But again, really focusing on the performance and giving administrators an opportunity to experience what it's like to be administrators, they continue to see if that's a role that they want to take on. And we will be expecting to have, my guess is we'll start to have applications probably sometime this summer for those. So, Mike, that's just a quick update of, that doesn't highlight all of those on your list, but at least a couple that we thought you might want to have a context for your discussion.
Nancy, your hand jumped up. And John, I don't know if you wanted to start that first?
Yeah, maybe if people indulged me, I was really eager, and I thank Sally for us to shine a spotlight on the whole teacher administrator quality improvement effort in our recommendations, because in part, it's so important for the state to advance this agenda, and for us to do our part, as we're trying to do. But we're putting, and we're hearing this from the educators, and even the state reps and others we're talking to, we're putting such demands on educators for high performance and meeting our cut scores, and we're putting such expectations on our teachers to deliver performance and deliver student learning. And even, I mean, Lisa and I were with Representative Ken Yonker, who's been on our local school board, and his basic point was, geez, I don't know if I can swallow more accreditation and accountability unless we, as a state, are really doing a lot more to help these teachers get really teachers get really good at delivering the high expectations that we're turning on. And I said, you know, "We need your help," you know. And I was delighted, as I shared with Mike and all of you, a chance to go over and meet with the governor and the governor's policy people and review, you know, our recommendations on our behalf. And we spent considerable time looking at the, and us and me certainly advocating, "We need a teacher quality, administrator quality offensive," as we're outlining, and I hope that will be part of what you, Governor, call for. And we even went so far as, you know, what can the governor call for and do what's needed in legislation on our recommendations? What can the State Board do itself? What can the department do? How do we, what do institutions, our higher institutions do? And the governor had been very impressed with, at the National Governors Association meeting with Bill Gates' talk. In part, you know, maybe Bill Gates is one of the few people richer than Governor Snyder, and so everybody listens to, everyone listens to Bill Gates, and rightfully so in the sense that he's been sharing, he put a lot of money into education reform. And so, part of what Bill Gates said to the governors, as the Gates Foundation has tried to focus on education reform, was they've learned, and they've been an advocate for high school reform and the things that we've done, but they've also said, "Look, in K-12, we know more about what works. Of all the variables under schools' control, the single most decisive factor in student achievement is excellent teaching. It's astonishing what great teachers can do for their students. Unfortunately, compared to the countries that outperform us in education, we do very little to measure, develop, and reward excellent teaching." And so, I think it's so right that we, together, try to advance the teacher quality and ability to deliver the goods, that I hope we can continue to put detail and put specific next steps on this, this set of recommendations. And I hope, as a state, we can continue to advance them, and so I very appreciate what we've been trying to do ourselves, but wanted to encourage us all to make it a priority as we move ahead.
By the way, as you know, that Gates moved his money from small high schools to how to have effective measurement systems so you could actually fairly determine whether student achievement is based on practice in the classroom, and he's really trying to revolutionize and make more concrete that whole arena. And then I think, because my daughter's a teacher, as you know, and she's happy to be measured by that, everyone's concerned, "Will it be a fair measure?" You know, "Or will I be held responsible for things I can't control?" So, I think with a billionaire rather than a millionaire, jumping into this with his money would be really helpful to try to put meat on this rather than just throw something out there that then some folks just think isn't a fair way to go. I think Nancy had it, and then I think Kath did.
I guess what I, Sandra. Sorry.
Please, I'm sorry.
Okay. Sally, what I had a, had a theme I saw running through the State Board at CEUs, and that might not have been the theme that everybody else picked up on, but it's something that's been very concerning to me for a lot of years, in that I think that if we are going to rely on State Board CEUs as a way of bringing the learning that needs to take place for whatever teacher, wherever that teacher is, for whatever needs they have, for whatever their district is doing, that we need to really ramp up the validity and credibility of those CEUs, and so, or what we consider a true CEU. And so, I'm really happy to hear that you threaded that through all three of these presentations that you made. I think, as John said, one of the things that I've tried to emphasize with our legislators is that it isn't a matter of performance accreditation, it isn't a matter of teacher tenure reform, it's not a matter of administrator certification, it's all of those things, and it's a continuum, and that you can't have one without the other. And so, these CEUs, that seems to me kind of is that little thread that kind of ties all those things together, in terms of what value do we place on the learning that takes place. So, thank you for that. I encourage you to continue that. I also wanted to ask you, if I understood it correctly, under your basic specialty and enhanced endorsement for educator, for administrators, that's not, I just want to clarify for anyone who might be listening to this, that's not just for superintendents?
No.
That's for anybody that's in the administrative levels past the classroom level, is that correct?
Administrative levels who have something to do with instruction. So, your business official would have a different.
No, but the principal, the curriculum director.
Principal Central Office.
Right, okay, I want to make sure we did that. And then the other thing that I was curious about, where did I write it down here? Sorry. Oh, and our professional learning that we're looking at now, are we also then looking at how, let me back up here a minute. I think one of the things I've observed and been a part of a long time ago was not so much what the teachers necessarily thought they needed to get in terms of professional learning, but how the districts, how the administrative central office, how the building superintendent, how the instructional leaders got their hands around what those needs were. Are we looking more at one-on-one evaluation, or no, I don't like that term, one-on-one contact with teacher and instructional leaders to discuss what the needs are so that we can pair those more closely? How are we doing that?
Well, that's part of, that's part of the role of the individual professional development plan, is that, you know, through informal or even a formal evaluation, you identify the areas that you really want to work on. And it's always been fascinating to me is that we have many times the districts deciding what those five days of professional development are going to be, and it gets to be, everybody needs the same thing.
Right.
And so, one of the discussions we, I think we need to have about even those five days of requirement, do we need to say, and still this is local decision, but to start to have the discussion, maybe one of those days is for a district-wide initiative, two of those days are for building-level initiatives, and then two of those are for your individual. I mean, we just, we need to have some conversations because we've got some latitude with how those five days get used, and they don't all have to be for district levels. So, it's really, it's a both-and. There are some things where you want all, everybody trained on the same thing, but also having been married to a teacher, he would come back home and just roll his eyes when sometimes it related nothing. So, he needed something that always going, was also going to be much more specific to his building needs and then his own. So, I think it's all of those, but we've also, so we've got the 15 days, or the five days of professional development per year, but then there's also the requirement for the continuation of the certification for those 18 hours, the State Board CEUs or college credit. So, we've got time, and we've got requirements that will support teachers as they get that professional development.
I guess what I'm thinking is, this will date me probably, this, oh, golly, this has been a good 10, maybe longer, years ago. Battle Creek Lakeview had a plan where they have personal, personal plans, shall we say, in place for each of their teachers and administrators, for what they felt collectively they needed. And when I say collectively, I mean, it wasn't just a single decision, "I think I need this," but rather a talk with your building leader, or your district leader, or whoever it was, or your, or your, say, department chair, or whatever it was. And when they had their professional development days, they did them district-wide, but they had a menu to choose from based on what their professional plan was, so that if, on any given professional development day, you had it broken up almost like a class period in terms of a college schedule, so that, you know, from eight to 11, I could go over here, and I needed this kind of thing, but then from one to three, I'm over here because I needed this kind of thing. And I don't know how well that worked, but I just wonder if that's something that's a best practice, that we're, those kinds of things we're looking at to provide districts the opportunity to call the best they can, because it's sometimes hard individually, but to then address the needs of individuals as well.
Well, without going into the weeds too much, I think that's appropriate, but you have to decide what's the purpose of the professional development.
Right.
Are you doing awareness?
Right.
If you're doing awareness, that's a very good structure for doing that. But if you really want me as a teacher to look at my teaching practice, to look at the data on my kids and how I'm doing in my school, that's why the professional learning communities have been so powerful, because many districts are taking an hour or two every single week and having the teachers in the same grade and/or content, or sometimes across the content or across the grade levels, meet, and they're actually looking at student data and saying, "Why, you know, Johnny didn't do really well, and can you all give me some ideas on what you did that was really successful?" Which also breaks down that isolation that teachers feel that they don't have a team to work with. So, when I'm envisioning my, you know, best-case scenario, we would be moving much more into that and using the teachers' own expertise as they learn from each other.
Thank you. I'm glad to hear that.
And the State Board CEUs, I probably should, I'm hope, I hope we figure out how to blow them up, because we're trying to say, we're sending a mixed message when we say to, when we're moving to proficiency for teachers, for students, and saying, "It may take you five years, 10 years, 15 years, it doesn't really matter, we just want you to be proficient." And then we have teachers go to a workshop, sit in a chair, and if you sit there for five hours, you get the State Board CEU. So, we're trying, we need to move out of that time-bound system for the professional development and move it into a proficiency as well. Don't know how to do that yet, but we're having some conversations that are pretty exciting.
Thank you.
Especially in the day and age of BlackBerries and other things, it's hard to keep people, even if they're well-intentioned, in a five-hour meeting to actually be focused and not be, you know, doing this other stuff. So, Kathy, you were next. Cassandra, Mary Ann.
Well, I'm really glad to hear all this about professional development because I've been very concerned about it. I think, as you know, for a long time, that with everything we did with the high schools and the enhanced curriculum, and the demands for everybody to take it, you know, the kids who never took Algebra II before are taking it now, I was very concerned that the teachers be given the opportunity and the help to be able to teach all those kids. So, I'm really glad to hear that you're working on that. And I don't know if that's one of the things that's included in how to teach all the kids, all the standard, the grade level kind of expectations that we have? Is that part of what we're trying to get across here?
Well, yeah, definitely, especially as we change the career and the college-ready standards, we're going to need to do more professional development. So, but that's not just a state function. I mean, that's got to be a regional function and a local district function.
Teacher prep function.
A teacher prep function, so there's a whole lot of responsibility about the pre-service and the in-service and the professional end of that. But, no, absolutely, looking at that college and career-ready curriculum is going to, you know, I mean, we're far, we're very close because of the high school expectations and the high school graduation requirements, but, no. I think you, when I've listened to districts talk about some of the changes they've made to teach Algebra I and II, they've made huge changes, even in how they're teaching math at seventh, sixth, and seventh grade.
Well, that's encouraging. Glad to hear that. Well, that's good. I want to say that, you know, I'm a member of this NASB study group on teacher preparation and compensation and evaluation, and at the first meeting, there were six or seven teaching fellows, teachers who were teaching fellows who were now in the Department of Education in Washington for a year, mostly young, but one was a, who had come from an alternative route, and she was a little older. But they were very eager to do just what this third tier was doing, to keep them in the classroom. And one was very articulate and talked about, she would love to be able to teach a half a day and mentor other teachers the other half a day, or maybe wanted to do it, whatever, whether it's a day a week or whatever it would be, but that would keep her in the classroom. These are obviously good teachers, there are half a dozen of them chosen from around the country, and they're outstanding. So, this is really, I think, I think everybody, are the teacher unions now on board with this?
On which?
The third tier.
They led the committee.
Well, are they, I know they finally led the committee, but are they enthusiastic about it now?
I haven't gone to the committee meetings, I don't know if they're enthusiastic, but based on what Flora says, they've got, they've got, they're pretty much close to consensus recommendation.
They're recommending it. I would say that they, particularly since we were clear from the beginning, this would be voluntary. I think it took some of the controversy out, and I think they were probably right. I don't know that this is something you can mandate. I think it's something that you would want to encourage and professionals would want to achieve, and maybe local districts would want to start to put compensation on that. I would, if I were a local board member, say, "Hey, let's give some thought to, is it just a master's degree, or is it some of this work on a third tier that involves year-to-year compensation?" But, so I think that really, you know, when we were able to clarify, this wasn't ever intended to be a mandate.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Richard, please, sir.
In my own professional experience with these issues, I have seen a lot of redundancy. People take their master's degrees for professional development reasons, but then you have extra requirements for SBUs or other things that you're supposed to do. I've sat through many irrelevant professional development, which introduced me to the latest theory of doing things which we were never going to consider in our school, but someone got a grant to pay for it, and we all needed to do it, so we discharged it. So, I'm very, very concerned that in our desire to improve the teaching profession, we end up with redundant, redundant kinds of requirements, and if it's not redundant in requiring the teacher, it can become very redundant in terms of someone appropriates money for it. A further aspect of this is that we confuse credentialing with actual skills and learning. You know, we've already, we've done the disservice to Michigan by saying that you've got to have a college, you've got to go to college, and you don't have to go to college. You can make a living, you can be a productive citizen, you can do all that, and no one should be ashamed for not having that college degree or whatever. But we have mistaken the college diploma for actual learning, and I would, I would like us to disengage, disengage that. Now, professional development are, if you think about it, are means to an end, means to more effective teaching. It might be simpler, and it might be less dysfunctional if we just focus on the end product, that is to say, quality teaching as exhibited in students who exhibit skills, okay, and let every school system determine its own approach to that, rather than straitjacketing with a whole series of SBUs, et cetera, et cetera. So, I would like, that's the direction I would like to see, simplify, focus on the end, and a lot less of the kinds of things that create a special marketplace of SBUs and grants and things like that, which actually represents a diversion of talent and attention away from the end product into these, into these side, side products.
Thank you, thank you for those comments. Cassandra, please.
Thank you. Just a question about the alternative routes. You mentioned that applications may be accepted soon?
If we get, if we get it, if we get the whole system through, I think there are, I think there's at least one group that's interested in applying for the alternative teacher, teacher route. In the law, they have to be, they have to, they have to have demonstrated a successful program elsewhere, so it's a pretty narrow band of who can apply for those.
Is this something that the criteria will come before the State Board of Education again?
I've got to check with Flora on those. I think those go through administrative rules, so I think they go to Mike. But, you know, Cassandra, I'm not really sure, I'll have to check.
All right, because it was just, it's my recollection that when we had the discussion back when the legislature was coming up with reforms, I was hesitant about the alternative routes publicly supporting that, out of the fear that, you know, we have all of these mandates for our institutions of higher education, and then we're going to basically allow these alternative routes to come in with very little criteria. And it was my understanding at that time that we said that these would come back before the State Board of Education, and that's why I agreed to support, because we would have the opportunity to weigh in. And so, I just, I would, whether that is the case or not, I would like to request that that happened.
Well, I can answer that right now. I mean, if, even if it is by law only required to come to me, I'm happy to bring it back to the board, and let's have that discussion here.
Thank you.
Okay.
Mary Ann, I think was next.
Thank you. I really just have a point of clarification. Did I hear you say that we are downplaying getting a master's degree in order to save money? Oh?
I don't think so.
Okay, I'm happy to hear that. I thought I heard that.
Gates has been pretty negative about the master's degree, and his research that, oddly enough, demonstrates an inverse correlation to student achievement with that. But I think it's different to different.
I think it's not to say a master's degree is inherently bad, it's just there may be very effective ways to help teachers get skills, per Richard, and other credentials, including national board certification and other things that are even more powerful to help them be great teachers in the classroom, you know. So the master's is not the silver bullet.
It may not be the silver bullet, but we certainly don't want to discourage anyone from getting.
From getting more credentials and skills that help them be better teachers, certainly.
That should not be a, yeah.
That's right. Here's Eileen, and then Nancy.
I think the question is whether there should be other alternatives besides the master's degree that would be more effective. And it certainly is true that we've got this professional learning requirement, professional development requirement in place that we know has not been met, certainly since I joined the board in 98, it wasn't anything that could be enforced. It was up to districts' sensibilities to do it. And we're seeing that professional learning experiences that are embedded are hugely more effective than an outside master's degree in pedagogy or in some other aspect, because it's an integral part of the teacher's day and how they function with kids. So I don't know whether master's degrees in 10 years are going to look more like professional learning, you know, are going to be part of the school in a way that really changes a teacher's life, but that may be a goal for universities to try and provide. As it is right now, though, if a teacher does a master's degree fresh out of teacher prep, then the ability to incorporate their learning experiences is limited. I think of so many universities now that will not allow people to get an MBA until they have been in the workforce for five years, because they simply don't have the framework in which to implement the knowledge.
You know, this may be an opportunity a little bit down the road as we get into third tier for the state board, to perhaps at school board association meetings, perhaps through other means of communicating, lay out some of that, that you think it's, masters can be important, other options are there to help them think about this differently. Because I think what I heard a number of you say is, different options for professional teachers to get to that end should be on the table. Right now, pretty much the only one is the master's degree, because, and my daughter's doing it right now, your incentives are too great to not go and start getting these credits. But I know that she has passed this now, but her first year or two, she really struggled, as most teachers do, and she didn't need to just get on that path. And this would be a way maybe to help local boards, you know, do you want to compensate, doesn't mean you shouldn't compensate for a master's, but are there other ways that you want to incentivize this? And if you, if we end up having a rich discussion by the time this is all done, I would say one other thing is, how do we help school boards where that action really is? Because we can't mandate that, we are a local-controlled state, would actually understand some of the same thinking you have, and then increase the chances that they'd adopt some of that. Nancy was next.
Actually, Eileen just said exactly everything that I was going to say, because I too agree that, and I'm thinking in particular, a young woman that I employ in the summertime when she's not teaching, who has, for two years, she's been a teacher now, this, next year hopefully will be her third year, but for two years, she's been on the possibility cut list, and the only way she sees out right now to guarantee her employment is to go and get a master's degree. And she said to me openly, "I don't want to do it. I have so much more to learn in my classroom before I go there, I don't even know what to get a master's degree in, but I feel like it's the only way I can stay employed, is to get a master's degree." And if that's the incentive, to me, it's wrong, so.
Great.
I think that's the idea. I mean, we want people to be highly educated, we want them to be an incentive to the people they're teaching.
But not just for the sake of getting the degree.
Not, but it always makes someone a better person somehow, so.
You can't downgrade it.
It looks like there's.
You can't downgrade the importance of getting one.
Okay. Good for now on that. Thanks, Sally, thanks for your leadership, Flora's leadership on this, it's very appreciated, and move right on to this.